Welcome, everybody. We're going to call over to the Grand Forks City Council meeting Monday, October 18th, 2021. Roll call, please, Marine.
Wygo.
Here.
Doppler.
Here.
Weather.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Bean.
Here.
We have a horn.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. The United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements and Comments. We did have a busy couple of weeks. First of all, we've got to give our congratulations. We are missing one council member tonight. Congratulations to Jeannie and her family. She had a Josephine Jennifer Mock was born on the 15th, so for anyone that wants to send some well wishes to her. From my understanding, they've got a girl and they've got two boys. So her and Cory are celebrating their first girl. So good for her. We're going to give her a few weeks off. We decided that three days in, she could at least enjoy that. So send your well wishes, everybody. Just got back late last evening, actually earlier this morning from the National Police Officers Memorial. We'll have Chief Nelson will talk a little bit more about that. But I just want to express my gratitude for the police and everything that they've done and the professionalism over this last 18 months and their willingness to help me be engaged and be a part of that trip. It was really special and I think everybody got something out of it. It's going to help with the grieving process and some decompression. So that was great. We'll let Chief Nelson add anything further on that. I did get to spend a little bit of time with Deputy Chief Mike Ferguson, who is going to be retiring, I believe, in the next week or two. And he's put 33 years in, so really enjoyable to hear some perspective from him over that trip and over his time involved with the Grand Forks Police Department. We did have that exciting, if anyone got to read the paper, it happened to be downtown. Was it two weeks ago now when Governor Bergen was here? Really got to highlight all the projects going on across the city. And that was really eye opening, I think, on a state level. And I think we're starting to get some more love statewide and people realize that Grand Forks is really up and coming place, which is pretty exciting. I got to swing by my old stopping grounds at Ingolstadt, we need to celebrate their 20th year anniversary. The Ingolstadt family was up there. That was very exciting, very touching to me to be able to express to them how their family and making that investment here in Grand Forks changed my life and getting to express that it's pretty special. Remembering the days back, back in that opening drawl, I was there, I was there on the right wing, I was able to be there for the 20th anniversary as the mayor. So a pretty special circular event there. Congratulations to Border States Electric. They finally got to the grand opening. They've been open for about a year, but because of circumstances, we had to wait a little while to crack that open. But for those that don't know, Border States did start here. So that's a pretty exciting multi-billion dollar company now that's continuing to make investments in Grand Forks. We also had the 15th Annual U.S. Summit and for anybody that watched, we had our Air Force Base consultancy and had a great discussion. I think it's safe to say that the Grand Forks Air Force Base is in one of the best positions it's been in a really long time. Future missions that would be really generational and should cement its place for the next 50 years, which is pretty exciting. They also highlighted all the collaboration between UND, the base, Space Force, and many other locals. I want to give a special thank you to the Grand Forks Commission, County Commission. We did receive some help on wastewater treatment to help us be more competitive in our courting of future businesses and keeping the cost down for citizens. So they did invest $3 million as part of our wastewater treatment, which will be a great benefit to everybody. Just wanted to give a thanks to them for thinking outside the box and working together with us. It's one thing to say that you work together, in this case, they actually showed it. And Keith's going to have another opportunity for them to show it coming up here later this week when he makes an ask on the CTE Center. And then tomorrow, I guess the last thing, heading out to Bismarck to testify on a couple of projects. One being the Red River Valley Water Supply, which we've all saw this summer. You know, we started to test our limits there when it came to water. As you saw the red start to slow down, we definitely got nervous. I learned more about water in the last 12 months than ever thought I would have learned. But I'll be out there to testify on that project on the 42nd Street grade separation. Hopefully finally get that project funded and move it forward. That's quite the mouthful, so we will move on now to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1, Proclamation, Extra Mile Day, November 1st, 2021.
I guess that's me again. Extra Mile Day. Whereas Grand Forks, North Dakota is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Grand Forks, North Dakota is a community that encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly with and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Grand Forks, North Dakota is a community that chooses to shine a light and celebrate individuals and organizations within this community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of the community. Whereas Grand Forks, North Dakota acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 500 extra mile cities and states in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2021. Therefore, I, Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, do hereby proclaim November 1st to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in our community to take the time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those around who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, and world a better place. Thank you.
2.2, Economic Development Association and Dakota Awards. The Governor's Choice Award, Economic Developer of the Year for a Large Community, Brandon Baumback, and the Project of the Air Corps Scientific.
Thank you. I'm going to hand this over to Keith Long. But first, I just wanted to thank council too and city staff on their work on the franchise fees for the power for the electric. I think without that, that Project of the Year might not have been a Grand Forks project. So I'm glad that we were able to land it here. So thank you to all the council members, their work and diligence on that. Mr. Long, why don't you tell us what we won?
Thank you. Brandon Bochensky, member of the council. Pleasure to be here tonight to celebrate. So we had some discussion tonight about the mayor's visit to Grand Forks a few weeks ago. And he mentioned to a number of folks how pleased he is with your leadership, mayor, and the direction and the progress the community made. And I think that's just fantastic. It was a really busy week last week when the recognitions occurred. In addition to having a UAS summit where sort of the global UAS community consented on Grand Forks, we also had a Main Street summit that really was hosted by the governor in Fargo and the State Economic Development Association held their conference in Fargo too. So I don't know who's checking calendars, but that wasn't done all that well, but it was a busy and exciting week. The community had an opportunity to be recognized in a couple of different categories, and I'm going to invite a few EDC teammates to come up and talk a little bit about that. But in mayor's comments, particularly at the Main Street summit where we received for the third year in a row, three out of three in terms of some recognition on that the city of Grand Forks has received, it's extremely complimentary of the community. I don't know if he said these words, but what I heard was nobody does it better than Grand Forks. And so I really want to compliment the community and the leadership here on the investments and the progress that you've made. The first award was the 21st Century Main Street Award that the city of Grand Forks would recognize. And the programs that many of them are administered in partnership with you and others with Becca Krueger from EDC Workforce Development Managers. I'd like to have her come up and talk a little bit about that recognition.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. This is the big award that we won. It's the 21st Century Workforce Award, which recognizes exemplary programs for workforce development throughout the state of North Dakota. I'm very excited because this is the third year in a row that Grand Forks has taken home a Main Street Award. And so I'm proud that this is coming to stay in City Hall as a representative of the community. We won for three different programs. The first is Intern Grand Forks, which has created 47 new internship programs here in Grand Forks, North Dakota at local industry. And it funds 50% of the wages for startup companies and 33% of the wages for interns at EDC member companies. And then the second thing that was recognized was the What's Cooler Today blog, which features five local writers every quarter to share stories about what makes Grand Forks a cool place to live, work, and play. And then the third thing that was recognized was the Welcoming and Relocation Guide, which you all have a copy of up there. We provided you one. That was a really big initiative. It took about a year and a half to put that all together and research it. We also used some great students from UND who helped put that all together alongside me, myself, and Alyssa Conixson. And so those were the three things that we were recognized for, and we're very proud that this is coming home to Grand Forks.
Thank you, Becca. And Mayor, if I might just add a couple of comments. The Intern Grand Forks program that Becca referenced is really fashioned and inspired by the city's internship program in partnership with UND. So I want to thank you for that inspiration. Secondly, the What's Cooler Today blog and relocation guide really are products of the What's Cooler Than You Think initiative that's administered by the Economic Development Corporation, but was seated by the city as well as the chamber and the county, CDB, UND, and the EDC for two years. I'm proud to say that, you know, through your leadership, that program was created and those two products came out of a What's Next meeting with an HR advisory group. Todd is with us from a steering committee standpoint and Tanji from the HR department is part of that HR advisory group. Through that funding, the EDC administers and the private sector has fully supplanted the public sector funding, so that program is fully supported for the private sector. So I'm going to acknowledge and thank you for your leadership in helping to see that tremendous program. So that happened on Tuesday. And on Wednesday, we had the opportunity to see the governor again, so he's getting used to people in Grand Forks and recognizing Grand Forks. We received the Project of the Year for Corps Scientific, and I'm going to let Brandon, who really was with a broad base of partners involved on the point on that project. So I'll invite Brandon up to the podium to talk about that.
Thank you, Keith. Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this exciting project. This is the award they gave us, which is handcrafted by a local Fargo artist. They gave it to us for the 2021 Governor's Choice Economic Development Award, Project of the Year for the Urban Community. And that underscores the importance. This is a community award. As the governor said too, it's communities like Grand Forks that are well positioned to capture the attention of this 21st century industry such as this one. It's $114 million investment, where the rest of their investments have been in the southeast of the United States. They came in quickly. And I think, you know, recognizing the comments from the company during the award ceremony, city of Grand Forks and our entire community responded quickly. And Coeur d'Alene Power, Nord-Eco Electric, I think within two days of saying they were going to come for a site visit, we had the mayor tip of the spear welcoming their committee as they came in to look at our community. Beyond that, of course, support all around council to change those franchise fees from the state side, renewing a sales tax exemption for data centers such as these. It truly is a community award. It underscores how primed we are for growth in Grand Forks. We have the right infrastructure to attract global and growing companies. So it's a congratulations to everybody.
And Mayor, one final recognition. In addition to the Project of the Year that the governor awarded to really the community, the EDC was happy to receive that on behalf of the community. The governor recognized Brandon Baumback as the Economic Developer of the state of North Dakota for Large Communities. So really want to congratulate him and thank him. Just a little background on Brandon. He's been with the EDC for five years, really been active at the state level before. And in that short period of time, has really been recognized as a leader locally. I'm sure he would agree with that, but also on the state level, very involved in the state organization, has looked to as a resource from a number of individuals and organizations across the state. So want to recognize his success and thank him for that and really proud of him. And since I'm up here, I'm going to take one liberty, Mayor. Really, I'm proud of the entire EDC team. So Becca was really a driving force behind the programs that the governor recognized on Tuesday. I really never met anybody who's more passionate about workforce and more passionate about their community than Becca, so I'm really proud of her and pleased that she's on the EDC team. And want to acknowledge Stephanie Fliger, who's our marketing manager at the EDC, and then Bridget West, who's on her team as well. So we have a fantastic team at the EDC, and it's just a wonderful partnership between all the organizations within the region and the community, but especially the city of Grand Forks. So thank you for your support, and it's good to brag a little bit. So thank you for the opportunity.
And thank you for all the hard work. It's not, there's not a start and end. It's a continuous process. So keep that going, but thank you for all that you guys have done over there at the EDC. Much appreciated. I think we can go on.
2.4. 2.4, 2021 City of Grand Forks Projects Recognition. The Grand Forks Regional Water Treatment Plant, North Dakota Chapter of American Institute of Architects Award of Merit, and the North Dakota American Public Works Association Project of the Year, and then Al Palmer Visitor Center at the Veterans Memorial Park, the North Dakota Chapter of American Institute of Architects Jurors Choice Award.
All right, Ms. Botman, please take it away.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm very pleased to be here tonight to present to the city the awards that the water treatment plant received in the last couple of weeks. It was about two weeks ago, we received the Award of Merit from the American Institute of Architects, along with our partners, JLG Architects. So that was in Fargo about two weeks ago. And then last week, we received the Project of the Year from the American Public Works Association, along with our design engineering partners, AE2S. Probably not much more to say, other than I think you all know what amazing project that was to be a part of, generational project for all of us that worked on it. And on the architectural side, it was brought up many times how an industrial facility can actually be pleasing to work in instead of just a bunch of brick walls. So proud to be able to accept these on behalf of the city of Grand Forks and the entire Water Division team.
I don't see Al Palmer. That must mean Colonel Sadler is going to be the one to talk about this one. So please, Colonel.
Thank you, sir. And my name is Tom Sadler. I thought I better say that. And I am the VMP Vice Chair. Unfortunately, Al is out of town on a pre-committed visit, so he's not able to be here tonight. I want to thank you for the invitation to be able to recognize JLG Architects for the outstanding award that they've won, the Jurors Choice Award. Adam Davidson and Sean Sensical are the JLG Architects we had the pleasure to work with. Adam is here with me tonight. Sean is with his new third child, so he's a busy, he must be like Jeannie Mock, I guess, there. Early meetings convinced us of their dedication and their expertise. They asked us our thoughts and then presented us with great options. In addition to the visitor center, they designed a layout of the donor plaques, which gives the wall a three-dimensional appearance. JLG also gave us their thoughts on other projects in the park, for example, the tile for the obelisk basis, and made an in-kind donation for us. Adam from the VMP board, congratulations and thanks for a job well done. So you want to?
I'll say a few words, yeah. Adam Davidson, JLG Architects. I think Tom gives us way too much credit for the project. I think this is really a great example of a community coming together for a really good cause. We've had so many in-kind donations, so much effort by some organizations, not just ourselves, to really make this possible. A lot of years, a lot of time spent to make this a possibility, and we're just going to be a part of it. And I think what's really great is that they were able to see a vision that we had. We bought into that vision and they want to see that through. So again, they give us way too much credit, and I think they get a lot of credit for the work they have done to really make this project possible. And I think seeing the site and how it's really transformed that area into just a really a fantastic community asset and really supporting our veterans. Myself included as a veteran, it's just been really, really, it's an experience that, you know, as an architect, to be able to have that, especially as a veteran. So I'm very happy to be a part of that myself. And so I really congratulate the veterans memorial park and all of these individuals here who have worked so hard on this to make it a possibility. So give them a round of applause as well, because they deserve it. Thank you very much.
Okay, if I could kind of take the pudding back. It's kind of nice to have one that you don't have to worry about people not seeing you. You know, at my height, it's kind of nice. If you'd allow me just a few minutes, I'd like to recognize a few of the key people that you see sitting out here in the audience who have come to honor JLG as a part of our team here. To begin, I'd like to provide just a little history. The need for a veterans park and a vision was begun in 2011. The Park District gave us the use of the land on the current site, and a groundbreaking was held on July 8th of 2015. The USS Kiska anchor was placed on August 23rd, 2016. In 2017, a need for new leadership was realized, and General Palmer was elected chairperson. His leadership brought the VMP board from need and vision to action and reality. The Park District was on board early. Bill Pomassino, now George Hillier, have provided strong support. Jill, if you would please stand. Yep. And make sure, if I say this wrong, let me know. Director of Operations and Community Relations. All right. They've given, the park gave us the use of the land, the sidewalks, the parking lot, the shelters, portion of visitor center, the accounting for donations, the stone and bench purchases, the financial information, keeping track of all that. You can imagine with the dollars it brought in on this particular project, it's amazing. And we never would have handled it with just a treasurer. And as we were moving along, we could see very easily that that was a big asset and they did an outstanding job for us. They also sent out the thank yous when these purchasers are made or donations are made and the tax documents. And then, of course, the media support, which Jill has been a strong, strong part of. And we appreciate all that the Park District has done for us. Thank you, Jill. Glad you were able to be here tonight. Recognizing the change in leadership, the city of Grand Forks and the city council lent their support to include financial. The visitor center project began moving when that happened, and donations increased. For your support, we are very grateful. Brad Gingler in planning, Mark Walker with the bidding process, and I saw Mark here somewhere in the dark. In the dark, yeah. Thank you, Mark. He really got us through that, and we really appreciate that. And the gentleman to my right here, Todd, the strong support and expert guidance that he gave us in working out and being able to bring this off, and we appreciate that, Todd. And I would like to add Spencer Halverson, because he was on our dedication committee and did an outstanding job, and he worked with the volunteers, and then he was out there working all that day, and he just did an outstanding job. So in the back there, he's, okay. Dale, if you'd stand up, please. Webster Foster Weston, WFW Engineers. He was the visitor center project manager. His attention to detail and ability to see how things could be done better is just amazing. So many things that happened out there that brought the project to a finer and nicer appearance and functioning can be attributed to him. He's been completely dedicated to the VMP. I've actually accused him of having a mattress in the back room of the visitor center and just spending the nights there while he's been working. He actually became project manager in reality for the entire VMP, which we really needed. And it was just an outstanding job. And the one year, we had cold spring out there working, we had op construction out there working, the visitor center project was going on, and the park board was also doing work out there. And so with all those things going on and Dale watching over things, things that would have not been as good as they should be, we were able to have his benefit for that. And then his in-kind service donation and obtaining of other ones have really been amazing, and we really appreciate that. Thank you, Dale. Outstanding. Jake, Jake Kowalski, Sand Steel Building Company. He was the general contractor on our visitor center and the donor wall. General contractor for the visitor center and donor wall, as I said, took the outstanding design and made it a reality. They made an in-kind donation, Sand Steel. And others who were subcontractors did so as well. He and his wife also made a donation for improvement to the visitor center. There's a, in the outer area, it's polished, but it wasn't in the restrooms. And both Al and his wife, and then Rick Ziegelman from the Park District, they chipped in together so that that polishing could be in the restrooms as well, so it would look sharp. And that's the kind of dedication that people are working with this, I'll bring to that. He's also got the Global Hawk up on the pole there, and he just finished putting the Reaper up. So if you haven't seen it, it's up out there now. And we appreciate all that Sand Steel and Jake has done for us. Thanks, Jake. I appreciate you coming tonight. Gary Shields and Mike Hagan. And I see Gary's not here. He must be out bringing money in. These are our fundraisers. Always a critical issue. Everything that you need to do, you've got to have funding. And this, they have been outstanding doing this. They've worked long hours and they've had no reimbursement. This was all on their own time doing this for us. Their attention to detail and ability to help focus the board led to their election to the VMP board. And they've given us focus, it really has. You know, we veterans may be that tunnel vision in some cases, and from their civilian perspective, it's been extremely helpful and have made things nicer too with their eyes, which are very perceptive. Thank you, Mike. And they've also actually volunteered for many shows and events that we've done, and they have a great relationship with Rydell. Ever since Rydell helped sponsor the VMP with their car show, and they've asked us back to do their Halloween event. They give us a trunk of the car and then we kind of dress up a little bit and then hand candy out, and that's coming up on the 28th, so we look forward to that. Greg was responsible singly basically for the memorial wall. There's 150-some images out there, and he, with what equipment he had, it's amazing what he was able to accomplish, but it was long hours putting those together. And then he's also done the bios for all of those, and that's, those are being worked into the touchscreen out there. And he's working with Sound and Light, HB Sound and Light on the touchscreen. And he also worked on the memorial stone listing so that people would be able to go into the visitor center and see, locate where their stones are out there, to save them walking around for a long period of time. And once that touchscreen gets finished up, then it'll be easy for people to find it. They have a list there right now for the number of stones that we've gotten put in place. Thank you, Greg. You've done outstanding work. Peggy. Peggy has attended board meetings and helps with projects. With about one month to go, she stepped in and took over the dedication committee as the chair. She did an amazing job as the chair, coordinating with many, many agents, with law enforcement, with HB Sound and Light. We had so many agencies that were to be dealt with, Dietrich Bus, and getting all that set up and running the task list. And she just did an outstanding job with that. And she worked with Greg on going through and finding where all those stones were and identifying them, so people could, that could go into the visitor center there. And thank you, Peggy, for all your outstanding work. Okay, the dedication, just briefly. We had perfect weather. Al said we were doing it no matter what happened, and we gave up a backup. And fortunately, whoever he asked to say the prayer, we got the, you know, like General Patton, we got the music, which was selected, and Peggy had a lot to do with. Patton, we got the music which was selected, and Peggy had a lot to do with that. The speakers were fantastic, sir. And the Red River Valley Motorcycle, which Mike and Gary are attached closely to, their idea the evening before to have that honoring the Afghan victims over there. And as an aside to that, the flags that they used in that ceremony are going to be sent to the families of those 13 individuals. Since the, and we had a great crowd. We figured maybe 13 to 15, something like that in the numbers. And then since the dedication, the sidewalks around the display areas have been placed, looks very nice. The Reaper's been mounted, thanks to Jake. Yet to do, we're looking at, there's a pine tree, it's right by the, behind the donor wall. And we're looking to make it a patriotic tree and put red, white, and blue lights on that. We're in the progress or trying to get that handled. We have to run some electricity from the Marine Shelter across. And then, but I think, I think we're going to be able to get that done here in November sometime, which I think will really add a nice touch for the nighttime. And then get the touchscreen finalized and get the B-52 mounted. They're going to be working on that over the winter and then getting it up here in the springtime. The foliage around the display foundations there will look really nice. And then more memorial stones placed. I checked today, when we turned the program over for the stones on 29 July, there were 1,149 stones sold. And since 1 August, I checked with Leif Larson at the Park District, he's one of the accountants, and he told me that there have been 139 stones sold since that date. And I'm assuming that a lot of those came through with the dedication program. And I've been told that we have boards in there where you can place the forms to order. And daily, they run out, people come and just grab them. And so that will bring us, it would bring us up to 1,288 stones out there. And we were figuring originally 1,300. But I think with the additional sidewalks, maybe that are out there now, can you pull a number? Wow, okay, maybe another 600 out there. But, so, anyway, in conclusion, we are deeply appreciative to all those who have donated money or in-kind services to the VMP. It's truly been a community coming together to make the VMP a beautiful park and a destination location. And we want to particularly thank the City of Grand Forks and the council members for all their support to make this possible. It's a destination location now, it's something we can all be proud of. And, you know, it's like the other things, the projects you're working to make it better for the community, and we really appreciate that. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, sir. Anybody else gets a chance that hasn't seen already, make sure you get out there. And this project, there's a lot of ways to do a project, but this thing was absolutely done the right way. So let's give one more round of applause, everybody. As far as the dedication, sir, I mean, that was pretty good. That first speaker, I don't know, he looked kind of nervous. Other than that, it was pretty good.
Yeah, you did great, sir.
2.5, 2021 National Police Week in Washington DC briefing.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. That's a tough act to follow, being a veteran myself. I'm greatly appreciative for all you've done for us, so thank you. Just before I quickly get started here, I'm going to actually probably go back a slide here in a minute, but how did we get to where we're at today? It all started on May 27th, 2020, when this community was changed forever, when we lost Cody. So when we lost Cody Holtie, the planning started 18, almost 18 months ago. How do we pay a tribute to a fallen officer on a national level, knowing that Police Week would be coming, which we had anticipated May, but was slid to October? So the brainstorming started. And one of the things that we wanted to make clear from the start, one thing that we would have in common with the veterans is knowing that we needed to raise funding. And I can tell you and stand here in front of you saying that the taxpayer dollars were not used for that trip. That was fundraising, that was donations from private vendors. Just support, support across there. As I look across the council and I look at all the support we've gotten, the mayor and his wife attending with us, things that would probably go unnoticed. I'm, he's probably going to be very humble, but I'm going to say thank you to Councilman Ravel, because one of the logistical nightmares we have is how do you take 40-some officers and transport their weapons and their gear and everything else without worrying about airlines mishandling luggage? And Danny really stepped up and said, I have a trailer, we'll let you use it. We were able to send two officers out with packed with their uniforms, badges, guns, everything else that needed to get out there. And Danny stepped up with his own personal things. So on behalf of us, I just want to acknowledge that and say thank you. So thank you to the citizens of Grand Forks. And so we look and we say, what all did this entail? Well, this entailed a very early flight out of Fargo on a Wednesday morning. But when we pull into Fargo, what do we see? We see Cass County Sheriff's vehicles, we see Fargo police vehicles with the red lights on, all in front of the airport escorting the family, escorting our officers, paying tribute. If that's not humbling, I don't know what is. We get on our flight, we get to DC, a series of, a series of events happen there. Here's just an example of an escort that happened out in DC when we were there. All right, I don't know what we're doing. All right. So what you're seeing here, one of the first events that we had a chance to go to is what's called a candlelight vigil. What I want you to look at is those three rows sitting there in all black shirts are all contingents of people representing Grand Forks. I personally talked to people from St. Louis, Missouri. We talked to people from California and Texas, said, you have that many people here for one officer? And we said, absolutely, we do. And for people to look and see the amount of support that we were there to give to the family, to fellow officers that we didn't even know, was phenomenal. And you'll see another example of that in a moment. Don't look at me, I have a face for radio, but however, the fine-looking lad next to me would be my youngest son. But this was a family event. Our officers could bring their families with. The officers that weren't were purely on a volunteer basis. They were willing to step up when we started with zero dollars and are willing to pay whatever they needed to do to get out there. Fortunately, fundraising was able to take care of pretty much all of their expenses for being out there. So in this candlelight vigil, the names of 701 officers were read. That's two years because of COVID, that were added to the wall since the last time they did this ceremony. That's, when you think of 701 people and you think of the contingent we had out here, think about how many lives were affected by those 700. That was the final one. They ask you to raise, raise your light up to the sky. They had a country artist there that had written a song called Last Call. And boy, if that doesn't catch you and make you want to shed a tear, you have no feelings, because I cried like a baby and I'll be, I'll admit it. But that was a chance for all those people in solidarity to raise their, raise their light up high. Here's another view of the, of there. And I think you will see in the middle of that front row, the mayor and his wife, my wife and I, as well as a contingent of our entire department. So if I could also, I just want to take a chance as we look at these photographs to thank Russ Hans. Russ Hans made all of these photographs available without charging us anything, accompanied us on the trip, and documented it from start to finish. So Russ has been really great. And also Matt Henson from WDAY spent the entire time with us as well. So I would like to thank them for their coverage. This is an inscription that's on the officer memorial wall. I've referenced it in my speech when Cody passed. And that's, it just says, it's not how these officers died that made them heroes, it's how they lived. So as we proceed to the wall, at the wall, there's pieces of paper like you see there and pencils, and it tells you where your officer's name is located. And then you get a chance to come and make an etching. So all of my officers had a chance to make an etching. And you will see in a moment, not only did my officers have a chance, but you had bagpipes there that were representing. And there's Cody, so Cody's wife and Cody's son, getting a chance to look at his name. There's Gunner and Mandy. Gunner's making the etching of his father's name. And there's Gunner paying tribute. That's what his name would look like on the wall. There's over 22,000 names on that wall. Give you the idea of the magnitude, that thing actually loops all the way around that park. And this is just a smattering of the people that were there. I think you look at the fellowship that's there. I think this picture says a lot on the grief that's experienced, but yet the healing. This was the setup for the actual memorial part itself. This happened on the lawn of the Capitol Building. At this one, there was 491 names that were read off, that were people that were killed in the line of duty last year. What's, what's unique about last year is COVID actually took the lives of more officers than all other means of violence combined. You saw what it looked like the night before? This is what it looked like on that day. The president spoke, talked about his initiatives, police reform, and wanting to honor the officers that were there. This was Deputy Nord. I kind of alluded to this earlier. It's hard for me to fathom, but there is at least 30-some officers that were represented to have their names read here that had no escorts. Nobody showed up from their community. We had six of my people stand up and say, pick us, we'll take whatever we need to do. And this was Deputy Nord. And you'll see some of my officers actually going through, paying tribute to people they've never met, never known, didn't know the family, but did not want them to be alone. Another one, this is Officer Finney or Officer Thurlaceus, whichever one she goes by. What they've done here, the significance is, when this started off, those stars in the middle of those plaques were gold. Each officer that was read, a rose was placed in there, and they filled in the stars as they went. This was Officer Becker. He heads up our honor guard. He's going up with his rose there for someone, again, that was not represented. And finally, that's Lieutenant Mackey and Mandy and Gunny. As luck or misfortune would have it, Cody was the 309th name out of the 491 that were read. At about 3:07, the skies opened up and it poured. So we, I've never been more proud of an organization, because I will tell you the frustrating part that when it started to rain, entire departments got up and walked away because it was raining. We sat there, and my guys were going nowhere until every last name was read, as a sign of respect for those officers. So as we, as we look at this, this was the last, what I would call major muscle movement in our healing process. I call it a process because I don't believe you're ever going to totally heal. And I don't know as an agency that we, I want them to totally heal. I want that sting to be there so that we don't have to go through this again. But what I do have solace of is knowing that I have leadership that has my department's back. I have a community that has my department's back. And the family of Cody know that Cody will always be remembered and that we'll have their back. I stand for any questions, if you have any. All right. Well, thank you for your support. I appreciate it.
Thank you, chief. I got the pleasure of riding back with Mr. Hans at the end of the trip last night, the earliest morning. And one last final tribute was the fact that he took pitchers for five days. He loaded all those pitchers up. And one of the officers noticed that when they first looked at it. How many pitchers do you think he loaded without even knowing? 639. Code Officer Holtie's badge number. So it was pretty special. Made the hair on your back stand up for sure. But it was a special trip. Thank you, chief. I suppose we do have a little bit of work to do. Number three, public hearings and second reading of ordinances.
3.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance to amend the zoning map for MedBU PUD Amendment Number 6.
Thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing for item 3.1. Anyone here to speak on item 3.1? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Open up for any comment or motions from council. Got a motion approved from President Sandy, second from Mr. Weigle. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. 3.1 carries unanimously.
3.2, public hearing and second reading of ordinance to annex Mill Road from North Washington Street to North Columbia Road.
All right, same procedure. Open the public hearing for item 3.2. Public hearing period is closed. Open any comments or motions from council. Move approval. Got a motion approved from Councilmember Cavami. We have a second from Mr. Sandy. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries unanimously.
3.3, public hearing on appeals, certification of special assessments and approved findings on various projects as are listed in your agenda. As is communicated, we did receive two appeals on project number 7540, the Oscarville Storm Pond Station.
Thank you. I know we have members to speak about that. So before I open the public hearing, I just want council to have a little bit more awareness on that. So Mr. Walker's going to give us a little bit more background on that particular project. Then we'll open the public hearing. No law for comment.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wachinski, members of city council. I prepared some background information to help go through this, if I can find my way through here.
And for everybody's awareness, this is project 7540.00. And if anyone's here to speak on other projects, we'll open that up as well later.
So, this takes a little while to load up.
Who's running? Who do we got back there, Todd? They can...
Greta, can you show that on the screen?
Well...
I'll start without the...
There we go.
Okay, thanks. So we're aware of Mr. Johnston's letter on behalf of Mr. Senske, concerned about the special assessments for this project and how they were calculated and the high cost of the special assessments towards Mr. Senske's lot for the storms of the project that's before you. Shown on the screen is the different lots that we believe is owned by Mr. Senske, and there's quite a few lots there. They account for about half, a little bit less than half of the area that benefited from the project. And it's equivalent to about 175 to 100 typical residential lots, just for perspective. So it's quite a large area. Obviously, the total assessments to Mr. Senske are rather significant for this project. My intent is to kind of review some of the project history of this, and then I'm going to turn it over to Emily Fossum from the Finance Department to talk about assessment benefit calculations for the project. So the pre-project conditions up in the Oscarville area are probably best described by footnote number one in Mr. Johnston's letter. Oscarville was originally platted and began to develop in the early 1960s. At that time, the subdivision was outside of the city limits and offered lower-cost lots for residential and commercial development. Low-maintenance gravel roads were installed to access properties and continue being used today except for 42nd Street, which has been paved. Drainage of the area is poor, in part due to undersized and poorly graded ditches and a high water table. There is a significant amount of large Often, the roads become impassable in the spring of the year with, after heavy rains, rain events. Property owners have repeatedly asked the City Council to provide paved roads in Oscarville. However, retrofitting a road into a developed subdivision can be challenging and expensive. In addition to this description, the area continued to develop in the 80s and the 90s with the additions of the Sensky subdivisions. Primarily, development occurred for commercial property, and there's a number of trucking companies up in the area. So development occurred in this area without installing storm sewer, sanitary sewer, or paved roads. And throughout the years, we've gotten a number of complaints in the Engineering Department and in the Public Works Department about the condition of the roads. At times, the roads are impassable. There's poor drainage. There's, at times, been semis that are stuck in the road and can't get out. There's numerous requests for additional gravel, additional blading, dust control, that type of thing. So the infrastructure and the paving never got put in this area to begin with, just because of the high cost of doing it. We did not proceed with installation of a sanitary sewer until we had a lift station up in that area. Working with Mr. Sensky, we decided to move forward with a project up there. Ultimately, the goal was to get the area paved, but first we had to install the infrastructure, beginning with the sanitary sewer, which was finalized in 2018, and the storm sewer being finalized on this item tonight, and the paving ongoing right now, which is anticipated to be finalized next year. We were cautious of proceeding with these projects because we knew that they would be expensive. It's more expensive to work around developed properties to install the infrastructure. You end up having to work around the driveways. You end up having to keep the roadways open for access to the businesses. You need to work around utilities such as electrical and gas and communication cables, water mains, water services, that type of thing. So we knew it was going to be relatively expensive as compared to working in an open field where you can simply push the dirt off to the side, dry it out, and bring it back in for backfilling. In the Oscarville area, because the area was already developed, we had to virtually load the excavated material into a truck, haul it away, dry it, and bring it back to put back into the trench. So it was much more expensive. So the sanitary sewer was the first utility to be installed in there. It's the deepest one, it's the one that needs to go in first. When we believed we had a commitment from the developers or for the property owners in the area, we proceeded with building a lift station at a city's cost of about $3.2 million. Once those assessments were given to the property owners, we then judged should we continue on with the next step, which would be the storm sewer project. Because the storm sewer was relatively expensive, because we're doing it in a developed area, and in addition to that, we had to install a stormwater pond, we had to acquire property off the developer's site, we had to buy land from somebody else. We had to build a pump station, and we had to construct about a mile of ditch to get the water to drain into the English Cooley, which is the ultimate location to drain to. We went back to City Council and suggested the costs of this are going to be relatively high, and suggested that the city might want to participate, additional funding towards this project. Normally, the cost of a pond is participated by the city of about 15%. We asked that the city consider contributing towards the project additional 35% of the cost of the pond, bringing the total city participation at the time that it was approved to about 3/4 of a million dollars. So once we had the design of the project underway and we had a cost estimate for the project, we took the project to the Special Assessment Commission for distribution of benefits. They followed the procedures that are outlined in our policy manual. This is a manual that has been adopted by the City Council and the Special Assessment Commission, and it talks about the normal procedures of special assessment. The policy indicated that properties within, which are served by the proposed segment of storm sewer or pond, would be included in the district. So we included all the properties that would drain into the storm sewer and into the pond. We then took the project to the Special Assessment Commission for distribution of benefits, and following the procedure, the Special Assessment Commission distributed benefits on a square foot basis of properties that drained into the storm sewer and into the pond, giving variable benefits to different properties. For commercial properties, a typical benefit is a 1.0. For residential, it is a .5, and for a stormwater pond, it's zero. And the reason for that is that the stormwater pond doesn't receive any benefit, it's for the purpose of draining the property. Residential property has less permeable land typically than commercial property, so you're going to get a lot more runoff from a commercial property. So that's why you have these varying amounts. So once the Special Assessment Commission determined the benefits, we had an estimate of the project cost, we calculated what the assessment range would be for each property owner. We then sent a letter to each property owner indicating that their estimated range for this project of cost is about 98 cents to a buck 36 per square foot of property that drains into the project. We sent that letter out to each individual property owners, identifying their total cost, and invited them to a public meeting. We held a public meeting primarily to get input for the project, but also to gauge whether we should continue forth with the project. We knew that the costs of the project were going to be expensive for the property owners out there, and we wanted to gauge whether they still wished to proceed with it. One of the comments that we received at the public input meeting was from Mr. Sensky, who wrote, "I am in favor of this project in its entirety, and a long time coming will be good for this part of town." So on that basis, we proceeded with bidding the project. We received bids for this project, and unfortunately, they were 27% higher than the engineer's estimate. But what we did is we produced a new range, and we sent it out to all the property owners indicating that a revised estimate of your special assessments would be from a buck 57 to a buck higher than what the original estimate was. At this point in time, we still didn't receive any objections for the project, so we continued on with it and constructed the storm sewer. Upon final completion of the storm sewer and the pond, we recalculated the costs, and we ended up with a cost of about a buck 51, lower than the lowest estimate we gave out after we received the bids, but a little bit higher than the higher number we originally gave out at the public input meeting. These were the numbers that were given to each property owners before the special assessment had their public hearing. Mr. Sensky showed up at the public input meeting and expressed his concern of the high cost of the project. And based on that comment, we went back and we looked at some of our calculations, and we decided that there were some things that we could probably do to lower the cost. And one of the things were, there were some costs that we had originally calculated as not a cost of the pond. So because the city was participating at 50% of the cost of the pond, we showed those project costs as a pond cost where the city would participate at 50%. And then we also eliminated the special assessment market on the consultant engineering fees, which brought the total final cost down to a buck 41, which matches pretty closely to the higher end of the cost range we gave at the public input meeting. It's about 3.7% higher than the original range we gave. This number would represent a total contribution of the city of a little over 3/4 of a million dollars, a little bit higher than what we originally estimated, but still pretty close. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Emily, who can talk a little bit about the special assessment cost benefit.
Good evening, Mayor Wachinski and Council. What I want to talk about is a benefit, and we are directed by North Dakota's entry code to always run benefit calculations for the project, and we have done so as required. And the methodology that we use in this calculation is consistent with our past practices of running the benefit calculation. And it is determined, you know, the benefit determined, you know, it's always higher than the cost that we assessed. So the benefit calculation was good, and this information is included in your findings in your packet. Do you have any other questions?
So with that, we would certainly be able, available to answer any questions. I see Mr. Sensky's in the audience. There may be perhaps other property owners in the audience that also may wish to speak on this project.
Thank you. Why don't we wait, we'll wait in here. I'm going to open the public hearing if we have follow-up questions, and we'll make it available to both parties. So now I'm going to open the public hearing on item 3.3. Mr. Sensky, is it Mr. Johnston, I presume, with him as well? Why don't we start with you if you want to speak, since we've got this one fresh in our minds?
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, we aren't here in adverse position totally. Mr. Sensky came here years and years ago, set up his shop, bought the land, was annexed into the city, and with that, there comes the benefit of being in the city. The other side of that is that, and you pay for those benefits. He has paid for those benefits for many, many years. He has always wanted the improvements, and Mr. Walker is correct that these are things, when he showed Mr. Sensky's letter, that are required to make that area even competitive on a basic level. As the, as things are moving, people want pavement, people want sanitary sewer, people want to have a nice place to put up their building. The problem in this particular case is that we're now in a city, and none of the city's formulas really are meant to address a situation where you have land that is already, for the most part, developed. There are some empty lots, and those will be built on, but for the most part, the buildings are there, the lots are paved, there isn't going to be a lot of future gain or change as if you're running through the farmland, the fields, as Mr. Walker indicated. There's going to be a lot of change in those certain circumstances. That won't necessarily be true here. So you need to really look at, as a community, what is it that we need to do when we have something that's extraordinarily expensive, and it's something that the city needs to come together and pick up more of that cost? No one, and Mr. Slinger is here, and I've agreed that I would include him in on this conversation, he put in a letter, no one is saying we should pay nothing. And we were at the meetings and have talked with our council member, we've talked with the mayor, we've talked with engineering quite often. So it isn't, should we do the project or shouldn't we do the project anymore? It's, yeah, this thing is expensive, and then the other bids are coming in, all told, I believe Mr. Sensky's going to be on the special assessment tag for about $3 million. It'll be a little less now with this extra money. I don't know how to calculate that in. But what's important here is what really is a benefit? All I've heard so far tonight is the cost, and we're going to equate that to the benefit. And I don't think that's appropriate here because clearly the cost is much higher than the costs of a normal project. So there's a difference to start. What is the benefit? Is the benefit to have your storm water run into a pond any different than the benefit to the property in a different district, a different place, that is running simply into another pond? So I think we're misplacing benefit in this particular instance by saying, well, we've calculated the cost, and the cost says, based upon a formula, that this is what it is. But with this, it's different. And normally, as Mr. Walker's indicated, it's a 15%, but that's a manual for assessing developers. It wasn't necessarily, as far as I know, set up to say, okay, this is how we, as a city, when we're going to go in, we're going to buy land, we're going to put in a pond, we're going to do these things. It's, okay, if you developer are going to develop under current regulations, you need to put in a storm pond or make other arrangements, and we will normally match 15, and then, of course, you get the waiver on the actual land the pond is on. So I don't think that takes into account here. It is more expensive, and they'll have to pay a little more, but what is that benefit? And then you can't assess over that. So what we're here asking is that the city really take a look, not at what it costs. At the end, you have to balance out what it costs with how you're going to make people pay or put against the land as a levy. But at this particular stage, we're asking that this council really take a look. The special counsel merely voted on a certified estimate, which is total cost. There was no breakdown whatsoever about how benefits would really factor in. As you all know, the statute allows the city to do an estimate. Once they get the estimate, they can just simply ask all the costs. And costs include construction costs, publication, all of these things. So that was what was really done here, but the statute requires an independent review of, okay, let's really look at cost. And we use the business part, not to pick on the business part, but we use that just as a way to say, look, the city has been very careful about calculating what a benefit is there, and they've come up with a very small number. They've not wanted to, excuse me, stifle market price anywhere else or put people in a situation where clearly, if you're getting almost the value of your land assessed, your buildings are worth nothing. People are going to want to go where it's cheap, where it's easy, and they don't have to worry about a special assessment. So we're using that as a gauge to say, number one, it's commercial, number two, the city has done a lot of work, they're replating, they're putting in all of this time and energy to get that at 3 1/4, and here we are with our specials, we're at 263. If I'm adding them upright, some haven't been assessed, but if you just take what's being proposed, divide it out by the square footage, you're at 263. And the big albatross is this storm sewer. And so we're asking that the council, and it may not be a popular thing to do, but it's the right thing to do, that you take a look, look at the benefit. Tonight, Edgewood Vista's on, excuse me, you know, their storm sewer system is 40 cents square foot, and no objection to that. Nobody's here to object, as far as I know, and we don't object. That's a little more expensive than the residential or some of these others, but here, we have a buck 51. I mean, clearly, that's not equitable. And clearly... And clearly, the city, just as the peripend of all of the citizens, has to look at the situation and say, this, this needs to be adjusted, it's just not fair to these landowners. And that's really what we're we're here asking for, not that you should have never done this, you didn't let us know, none of that. We're happy, but it's not equitable. And we ask that you reassess that benefit value prior to assessing. And I can take questions if you'd like.
Thank you. It's, I mean, it's always a challenge, especially on the edge. You know, you look at, as you started, the value, where's the benefit once you've got annexed, and now you're in the city? But then you also have to look at the factor of, you know, how did you benefit by being on the edge of the city before you were annexed? I think you're going to have a hard time finding any developer that's excited about paying for storm sewer and storm water protection. I mean, I pay for that on my own, in my day job, so to speak, and you never get that money back. That doesn't add value to your land until it floods, of course, then it's worth nothing. And I think we're constantly trying. I know we've obviously, you know, we've had some meetings on the street paving and the streetlights, and I think the cities try to do the the best they they can on a very difficult situation, that it was set up long before, you know, any of us were really here, unfortunately, and we're working through it. But, you know, I'll definitely open it up. I know there's a there's a certain, I don't know if Dan wants to add, as far as the city attorney, what what, as part of this actual meeting, what level needs to be, you know, met in order to have a change? But just regardless of that, it is something that we are constantly working and looking at. This isn't the only project, there's, you know, others on the north side that we're looking at, you know, what's the best path forward as well? But, Mr. Gostad?
Yeah, just quickly respond. We're not here saying there's no value, and we're not here even complaining that there's going to be an assessment. So, you know, there's a, there are a number of quotations about how nobody loves it. Well, in this case, I can say Mr. Sensky really does want, he's probably not in love with it, but he definitely sees the value, has wanted it for years and years and years. So that's, that's the difference here. We're at, we're at a point where we feel an equitable adjustment needs to be made, and that this is the body that that would do it.
Mr. Gostad?
Yep. A couple of things, just to be mindful of, in my research, the the courts usually, while they do conclude that the assessments are presumptively valid.
That's true.
You need to, there needs to be showing that the assessments were arbitrary and capricious, pretty heavy standard, pretty heavy burden to meet. The North, the North Dakota Supreme Court has said, and I'll just quote, "The process of quantifying benefits occurring to each lot inevitably rests in the judgment and discretion of the Special Assessment Commission." There's no, there's simply no precise formula, excuse me, for quantifying benefits. They also said that they generally upheld assessments based upon a formula to determine the benefit a property receives from the improvement in the amount to assess. As I understand, the Special Assessment Commission did make findings of benefits. It's paragraph eight of the September 30th, 2021 findings, where they said that the, they make specifically finds that all properties within this particular improvement district are especially benefited from the project, and the amounts of the assessments are set forth in Attachment A. And Attachment A provides the the benefits that were assigned in in quantifying it, and also the assessment was attached. And based upon what Ms. Fossey testified to and what Mr. Walker testified to, that the those benefits are derived from the city policy that is utilized for making these types of determinations, which is precisely what the North Dakota Supreme Court has said we will uphold in those set of circumstances. And so I haven't necessarily heard any type of evidence, other than it's, we'd rather not be billed at this rate, but it seems to me that the Special Assessment Commission, the city staff, engineering department, the finance department did precisely what the policies and the law requires them to do in coming forward with the with the special assessments.
Thank you, Mr. Gostad. Well, I'm just going to give a second if council members have any interjection. Please, Mr. Sandy.
Simple question, what if we don't move this forward tonight, then what? And what if we just agree, when, okay, that you don't want the storm sewer protection, we're not going to put it in? Now what?
Well, it's already there, but if we don't move forward today...
Right, right, see, and that's, that's my point. So what are the options? Mr. Walker, what are our options tonight? Mr. Gostad, what are our options?
Well, your option is simple. You need to look at that benefit again, we need to get together, you need to make a specific finding that is equitable. The proof is there. It isn't equitable, and, you know, it's arbitrary and capricious, but at the end, it still is required to be equitable, and this one's on the line now. All these cases are so close, they've never dealt with this, and I can tell you, this standard formula does not fit this particular situation, and that's a problem.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
I'll give you a hypothetical, but it's actually a reality. Seventeenth or Seventeenth Street South, south of 36th Avenue South, the concrete was installed approximately three years before 16th Street South, south of 36th. Special assessments on 17th for all those single-family homes, which are nice modest homes, were a hair over $30,000, but on 16th, they were close to $52,000, and that's because three years later, the cost of inputting those materials were that much higher. Is it equitable for the people on 16th, when the costs are that much more, or do you believe that that wasn't equitable for the city of Grand Forks to special assess them for that additional cost? When the houses on 16th are virtually identical to the homes on 17th, and they're the same size lots?
I think you're making our point for us, and I appreciate that, because what has happened there is, again, that's not your standard formula, that's not your standard set of circumstances. That is a situation where you really needed to look at, okay, the the water is going to the same place at the same rate, at the same everything, correct? There's no difference in water flow, water storage, any of those things. What is the difference? The difference is, the circumstances changed, something had happened before you decided to do the project that influenced the cost, not the benefit. And I would say that was inequitable, and someone should have protested that.
But I would say that the difference was time. It wasn't the the engineering or the requirements of the city whatsoever, it's what it costs to input the infrastructure.
Right, the cost, not the benefit. That's the problem where you're running into.
But don't you are, don't you inherently get your benefit based upon what the cost is?
No.
Okay, I disagree with you. That's okay.
You, you have a cost, and it's normally a cost to do business. And when you're on the...
But don't you take, don't you take time into, does time not have a factor at all? Time value of money?
Well, time value of money would be a factor, but in that particular case, it was more about decisions that had been made by the city prior to to pave that, before they made the decision, we need to do the storm water. And so is that 100% the property owners? Is that something the city really needs to look at as, okay, now here we are, we've made these decisions, and is it fair, is it equitable to pound that whole thing down when there's absolutely no change in benefit? That would be the problem. Now, should there be some difference? I mean, it's not going to be the same, like, these guys pay exactly the same as these guys. That's not, that's not an equitable finding. It's, the equity is, what's what's fair for what happened and is happening and is being calculated? And that's where we're at. You know, it's $400 and some thousand on Mr. Sensky's shop and office building, and the the other two together are about that amount. So this is just an albatross, it's an outlier, and that's what makes it problematic. And that's where the city, I understand funds are tight, and nobody wants to try to dig up money, and everybody's got to make, you know, the, the, the reasoning for it, but this is one of those cases where you say, this, this is something that the city really needs to look at to be equitable in this situation for these landowners, whereas, you know, and the argument, we've talked about it numerous times, if you'd have put it in right away 30 years ago, the special would have run by now, and the cost would have been a lot less, and it probably wasn't feasible, and we've, we can all argue about that up and down and everywhere. But here's the situation that is a fact, he's been paying city taxes, and this is a different situation, and it can't be equitable under the guise of the straight formula, and that's the problem.
I guess I got two quick things here. Mr. Johnson, is it Mr. Johnson? Am I got that correct?
Yes.
All right. You're not, well, just to be clear, you're not asserting by any means that that Mr. Sensky was singled out. Had anybody owned that property, this would have happened to them as well?
Right.
Okay. And Mr. Walker, the city originally had a cost share that was X, and with this cost going up, whatever percentage of the cost went up for Mr. Sensky, it went up for the city as well. So I imagine this ended up already being a much more expensive cost for the city than originally had. So basically, that equity remained the same as well?
That is correct. In addition to there being, excuse me, a city share for the storm sewer project, there was a city share for the sanitary sewer project that was was certified a couple of years ago. There also is a contribution on the paving as well, so when you add all of those city shares on there, the the city share for this area is is pretty significant. I also want to point out, it's, it's been referenced, cost of the business park. I don't know for sure what the total costs of the business park was, but that was a project that was done in about 2010, so we're comparing 2010 dollars to to now. The other thing that happened in the business park is is that we had a grant from, or we had federal funding, I should say, through the North Dakota DOT that paid for 80% of the roadway, which is a pretty significant cost. They also paid for 20% of the pond, the storm sewer, and the drainage ditch. So there was a lot of federal money that came into that project that reduced those project costs. And then in addition, of course, it was, it was done in an undeveloped area, which could have been done more economically. The last thing I wanted to point out is, as a sanity check, we looked at, what are the costs per square foot in this area, the Oscarville area, with the city subsidies? And what are the costs of the special assessments in a typical residential lot? We picked the residential lot in the Southern Estates area, and we adjusted the special assessments to today's dollars. Projects were done at different point in time, so we used a a 3% simple interest factor to adjust all of the costs to at the same time. When we, and we didn't calculate all of the costs, but we we calculated similar projects. So we, so we did the storm sewer, the paving, the sanitary sewer. For a typical residential lot, we came up with a cost per square foot of a $5.11 for that particular lot. The the lot that Mr. Sensky owns, the large lot that was referenced by Mr. Johnson, that cost was a buck 54. That's based upon the the buck 50, 51 number that we originally calculated, so it's even going to be less now that we reduced that cost for a buck 41. So I don't necessarily agree that the costs today for the projects out there are extreme. I believe that with the the additional costs that the city put in, we've, we've normalized it.
With the help that the city has given already on on this project, would, could someone that's developing another part of town not make the argument that it's inequitable to them already?
You certainly open up a precedent, setting a precedent for for doing something like this.
Well, that, well, we've already gotten to.
Yeah.
I think it's tough, we, I mean, we've got to balance, we're trying to be business friendly, we don't want to have to deal with these things, and we want business to be, we don't want to punish people, but these fringe deals, when you buy them and you get them just outside of town, and you you get there, and you can't stop the city from growing, and they become these tough issues. That's the only place that we're running into issues right now, is right there, and you can't stop a city from growing, or we're going to be, your taxes are going to be much higher than that if we can't grow. So, I mean, it is a challenge, but I don't know that that there's been enough proof that, you know, that we've heard, and, you know, we always defer to Mr. Gostad on something like this, but I don't vote on it, I guess that's my thoughts at this point, and it's, it is a difficult situation. I think we've tried to do many things to to make this as right as possible, and I don't think anyone's going to be happy at the end of this, regardless, the city or or the other side, because it, both sides have given quite a bit already. Any further comments from council? Anything further, please, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just close with the, just an obvious comment that Mr. Sensky didn't buy now, or even five years ago, and is having to deal with this. He bought in '87, and throughout that entire time, the city grew up around and did nothing. And that's, that's one very good reason why it's very different here. It isn't like he's a developer, he went and bought this property and was going to develop it. He bought the property, and the city kept going, but he didn't get those perks or those, that ability, and that's, that's what's different here. And I don't think that it's appropriate to look and try to adjust something backwards. I mean, we have plenty of examples here today, we don't need to try to figure out what projects are, that's pretty, it's simple. See, it's not cheap, nobody's saying it's cheap, this is just too expensive, just by looking at that bill compared to what else you're even going to consider tonight. It's, it's too, too big, that makes it inequitable, and it doesn't follow that formula. And so for that reason, we would continue to ask that this body take a look at that and do some adjusting on actual benefit. Thank you.
I understand. I guess I was going to give you the last words, but just stay there so you can still have it. Once the property was annexed, all Mr. Sensky had to do was write a letter to the city engineer saying, I want to have the, I want this to be served. So it could have been served in in the past, and it could have started the process earlier on.
He did, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but he repeatedly requested and wrote letters, and had the mayor out many times when the the road was impassable, was a much different mayor at that time, two or three before, but...
I think that's part of the problem, huh?
So it isn't like he wasn't.
Okay.
And and had they just done it, maybe it would be different, maybe it wouldn't, I don't know. But what is true here today is now it's being done, and it's much more expensive than the benefit, and we would, again, request reconsideration of the Special Assessment Commission's finding.
Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you, Mr. Sensky, as well. Really appreciate your level of engagement. At this time, I think we're going to, is there anybody else to speak on other special assessment projects? I want to open that up first before we begin to move. All right, we're going to close the public hearing now, and I would, I guess at this point, open it up to to council to, for their wishes. President Sandy?
With all due respect to Mr. Sensky and his council, and there, he's a good business owner in our community and deserves a lot of praise, and I, I for one, feel a little bit remiss, the city of Grand Forks didn't tackle the issues out in Oscarville earlier than now. It didn't happen for a variety of reasons, over multiple, as already been pointed out, over multiple administrations and multiple councils. So I'll take some of the blame. I think there's lots of blame to go around for this. Fortunately, we finally did get some momentum, the city put in significant finances, and in my opinion, was very fair to the owners, the business owners and the landowners in the Oscarville area. And so I for one, think that, based upon what I'm hearing from city staff and doing my own calculations, looking at it, I believe that... calculations, looking at it, I believe that our commission has done a very good job of defining benefit, and therefore, I think we should stay the course. And so I will approve all of the special assessment districts. Mr. Mayor?
So we have a motion to approve all the special assessment project districts which are listed on the agenda. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second with a question, if I may.
We have a second from Mr. Weber, and you, of course, now we'll open it back up.
So, this has been a problem a long time in the making, and it's only gotten more and more expensive. What I understand from Mr. Johnson on behalf of Mr. Sensky tonight is not contesting what's been done, but asking for additional funding from the city. Mr. Walker, can you give us an idea, I don't need specific dollar amounts, but the city has contributed significantly more on this project than we have in similar projects around the city. Is that a fair statement?
For the storm sewer, the normal city share would have been something less than 200,000. The city council put in an additional 35,000. That brought that amount up to about three-quarters of a million dollars. And what we did is we counted the discharge ditch...
Thirty-five thousand or 350?
I'm sorry. 350,000.
Thanks.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's not a rounding error.
I just dropped a zero.
Yeah.
In addition to that, we counted some things that we haven't counted in the past as part of the pond projects, so that the 50% city share would cover more in this area to help out the property owners in the Oscarville area.
And was that the only place where the city contributed more than we normally would have?
No. There was, under the sanitary sewer project, there was about 160, 170,000 dollars or so that the city spent additional monies to extend the sanitary sewer underneath 42nd Street and underneath the railroad tracks. Normally, that would be a cost that would be special assessed to the upstream properties, but when that project was pursued, we recommended that that portion be paid for by the city. And so that portion of the project was not special assessed. And then there also is, has been a contribution to the paving for the city council, has approved additional funding for the paving. I don't remember exactly what that dollar amount was, but it amounted to paying for about 40% of the local streets of a new construction, which I don't believe that we've ever done that before on a special assessment project. We further looked at 27th Avenue and 24th Avenue. If you can imagine those streets, they run into the interstate, and so they don't continue on, they're at dead-end street. But we called those streets classified streets, and so the city would pay 80% of those costs of those streets, which was something that wasn't necessarily policy, to call them a classified street when they weren't. But just because the interstate is there, those roadways don't continue through. So we called them classified streets.
Actually, I'm going to stop you there, because I think I could keep asking similar questions, and you could keep giving me similar answers. In our effort to be fair to the property owners, the business owners in Oscarville, I think we've gone above and beyond, and if I keep asking questions, we're running the risk of demonstrating that we need to be fair to all of the taxpayers of the city. And so that's why I seconded Mr. President Sandy's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any further comment by council? Mr. Cavani?
And just a quick comment. Yeah, I would agree. I don't like the idea of having any outliers or exceptions to the rule. I mean, our goal is to grow Grand Forks as aggressively as we can, and if we're known for one-off deals, that's scary. So while the timing is not great, had this been bid this year, it would be 40% higher. So it's great that this was October of 19 and not October of this year. So we're already benefiting from the timing, and I think putting it off further wouldn't have helped. So we can't go forward, we can't go back. I think we've done all we can. Appreciate it.
Anything further? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of item 3.1 as listed in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to number four, action items. City administrative staff wants to pull four, 4.0, 4.1. Let's pull 4.2, because I think that wasn't unanimous. And we had one other thing we wanted to list. Mr. Schoen still here, yes, on 4.4, just to make sure we've got some further clarity there. Any other items outside of 4.0, 4.1, 4.2, and 4.4 that council would like to pull tonight? All right, then, items 4.3, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, and 4.10, we'd be looking at a motion to move forward.
I'll move.
Got a motion from Mr. Weber, second from Mr. Cavani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. They carry unanimously. 4.0.
4.0, resolution awarding sale and directing issuance of refunding improvement bonds, Series 2021A, refunding improvement refunding bonds, 2021B, and sewer reserve revenue refunding bonds, 2021C. I'll go up to the podium and address.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Arstad. Please continue.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So tonight, we bring forward resolutions awarding the sale of bonds, Series 2021A, B, and C. Since we last met on these bonds, we did receive word from Moody's Rating H.C. that our AA2 rating was affirmed, so we were pleased to get that news. The main bond, the largest of the three, the 2021A, the pre-sale summary had been estimated of a rate approximately 2%. And I'll be introducing Mr. Paul Steiman here that'll go through how those bids came in today. The bonds are sold on a 25-year term. If you remember, I believe it was three or four years ago, we changed that term from 20 years out to 25 years to help just with cash flow for those special assessment payers on an annual cash flow basis. So these bonds are based on 25 years. Bids were received by Baker Tilly today, and Mr. Paul Steiman did make the trip. He's here with us today to go through those bid results.
Mr. Simon, please.
Thank you, Maureen. Good evening, Mayor Bachansky and council. On the 2021A, you offered 8.325 million in bonds. This morning at 10:00 a.m. in our offices, we took bids. There were two bidders. The best bid was Robert W. Baird &amp; Company at a true interest cost of 2%. And just for some perspective, the second bid, or cover bid as we call it, was 5 one-hundredths of a percent different. They came in at 2.05%. And that bid was, there was a resizing that occurred because of some premium that came with that bid. It was resized, so your final borrowing amount was 7.5 million, and the final sizing amount of the interest rate was technically 2.04%. And shall I proceed with the 2021?
Yes, please continue.
So the 2021B was a refunding of a refunding bond. So this bond was sold for the purpose of achieving savings, interest cost savings. You offered 1.810 million. You had four bidders on that bond, and the lowest true interest cost bid was 0.74%, again, by Robert W. Baird &amp; Company. And by the way, they bought all three of your issues today. And that was, again, 0.74% true interest cost, and the important part of that B was how much you saved. I want to make sure I've got the B and not the C. So on the B, your savings, so your savings net of all costs of issuance, and this is strictly interest cost savings, was $354,000. And also on that issue, because of some cash that the city put into the refunding, we reduced the term by five years from 2032 to 2027. And lastly, on the 2021C, that also was a refunding of a refunding for interest cost savings, a refunding of your sewer reserve revenue refunding bonds. And that had four bidders as well. Robert W. Baird was your winning bid at 1.11% true interest cost, and savings achieved on that deal. Net, again, net of all costs of issuance and converted into today's dollars, $287,000. So good savings on those two issues. And then, as I typically do, Mr. Mayor, I'll just make a quick comment about, read a little bit about what, the good things that Moody's has to say about the city of Grand Forks. Again, you were reaffirmed at a AA2 stable, so Moody's doesn't intend to change that rating for at least the horizon of two years. And the comment, I'll just read here for you. "The city of Grand Forks credit profile benefits from its status as a regional retail hub and is additionally stabilized by strong institutional presence. The city consistently maintains strong fund balance and liquidity, which we anticipated will continue going forward, given conservative budgeting practices and stable operating trends." Balance that comment with this last sentence. "These attributes are weighed against elevated debt and pension burdens, in tandem with high fixed costs driven by ongoing capital needs and participation in an unfunded state pension plan." So I'm sure the rating report is in your packet. It's a good read. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Working on that pension every day, so we'll have something to talk about there. People keep retiring, though, so that goes the other way. But no, I think that's all. That's all great news and good to hear. Any questions for Mr. Simon? All right, thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Did you have anything else on the item, Maureen?
No, just to state that with that, we would look for approval of the resolutions that are attached awarding the sale of the bonds.
Sounds good. Get that motion. Motion from Mr. Weigl, second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously.
4.1, introduce ordinance and preliminary approval to amend City Code Section 9-0217 relating to tobacco sales.
Thank you. Mr. Gossett, thank you for moving so quickly. I think, you know, with the state changing law, I think we try to mirror that as quick as possible, and sometimes we've got to make some adjustments. So thank you for taking care of that so quickly. But if you want to give an update on this item, that'd be great.
What happened is the age for buying tobacco raised to age 21. Our ordinance before said that if you were working, you had to be supervised by somebody that was 18, and that was consistent with the age that you could buy tobacco products. So when we were drafting the prior ordinance, we raised everything up to age 21, and there was some feedback from local businesses and employees regarding that and the impact that may have. And so we made an adjustment so that if you were at least 18 years old, you did not need to be supervised when you were working to sell tobacco products. If you're under 18, you'd still need to have supervision by somebody that's 18 years of age or older, which would carry forward the prior status and under the ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Gossett. And with some conversation with public health director today, they didn't have any issues in that, which was good to see. And it just essentially goes back to as it was. I think with workforce, it'd be really difficult to expect, you know, these gas stations and stores to have to have a 21-year-old on duty all the time, have two people at 3:00 in the morning. Doesn't make any sense, but...
Move approval.
Got a motion to approve from Mr. He's sold. Mr. Weber sold. We got a motion to approve. We have a second from Mr. Cavani. Any further comment on this item? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. 4.1 carries unanimously.
4.2, introduce ordinance and preliminary approval to amend City Code Section 21-0228 relating to minors serving and collecting money for alcoholic beverages in a restaurant.
Thank you. And this one did pass, I believe, 6.1, so I just wanted to bring it up again so that not many of you wishing to dissent could. Any comments on item 4.2?
Move approval.
Got a motion to approve from Mr. Weigl. We have a second from Mr. Sandy, President Sandy. All those, any further comment? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries with only dockler dissenting.
4.4, mortgage assumption requests architectural properties.
Thank you. Mr. Schoen's here. I think the reason that, and Mr. Schoen had also wanted this just to be stated, just the realization that with this mortgage assumption, that this loan, being the only loan on the property right now, I believe, is in first position. With the new owners, it may shift to second position. I just think that council needs to be aware of that. I don't, there's any concerns with, you know, with the loan amount and with the new group that's buying it. So, Mr. Sandy?
I would assume we probably weren't in first position when they took the loan in the first...
Exactly. Originally, it wasn't first position, but when you pay a building off, sometimes you become first when you're second.
I'll move approval.
All right, we got a motion to approve, second from Mr. Cavani. The motion was from President Sandy, second from Councilmember Cavani. Any further comment? You waited this long, Mr. Schoen. We just appreciate everything that you've done over the years. Give the moment. You sat through all this, so we really appreciate that. End of a legacy on that one, but hopefully, your next endeavors will be as enjoyable as the past. So, thank you, sir. We've celebrated a lot tonight, and Mr. Schoen deserved some celebration as well. It was great. I loved the picture that you showed us last week. This is what the development's going to look like, and that's what you made it look like. Thanks. Thanks for all you've done. Why don't we give him a round of applause?
Yeah.
All right, any further comment on item 4.4? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. All right, we're on to five information items.
5.1, investment portfolio summary as of September 30.
Thank you.
And 5.2 is your human resources quarterly staffing report for the third quarter 2021. And 5.3 is COVID-19 update.
Sounds good. Mr. Fionna, do we have an update on that, or is this one just going to be filed on there?
Just not yet.
All right, thank you. Moving on to six, citizen comments. Anybody left? I think I recognize just about everybody, but, all right, we'll open the period of citizen comments, and now the period is closed. With that, we've got seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1, vendor lists and engineers estimate as is presented.
Got a motion to approve the vendor list and engineers. So moved by President Sandy, second by Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. There we go. Moving to eight.
Still with you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Fionna, city administrator comments, sir?
A few updates. Bill's gone, but he was the original infill developer before Governor Bergman came in. He was doing it well before all that. So you see all those great buildings he redeveloped, along with all his partners on that. So here's the bill. I just want to give you a heads up. We're moving forward, working with Dan and others on city staff, moving forward with the Lyons Auto Development, so you will see that next week. So we're working on, particularly, if you recall, there was the alley that was involved in making that development move forward. There was a Grand Forks Herald parking lot that's involved, and so those will all be incorporated into the development agreement. We have some land swapping. There's some intricacies on that, but otherwise, as you recall, it's a 20-year pilot at 100%. So I just want to put that on your radar, that's moving forward, and there's a few novelties as part of that development. Number two, the other thing we're planning to bring is the Career Impact Academy has built some momentum. And so two pieces of momentum that we've worked on, both for the Jobs Development Authority and the city council and the city of Grand Forks, is, number one, as you recall, the Jobs Development Authority did buy the property of the former Holiday Inn. You've approved the abatement and demolition of those buildings. Also, on a map, we've shown on the corner of 42nd and Gateway, to include the CBB lot, would be incorporated as part of our donation to this project. So if you total all that up, all those properties and the value that our assessing department has put to that, that's about $1.7 million. And so when I talk about the parking lot of CBB, it'd be a shared parking lot, but it'd be a way for us to contribute additional land to get to our $10 million match that we want from that state in North Dakota. And then if you add the $450,000, you know, we're upwards of, a little bit over, 2.11%. 2.1 of potential match to go to that 10 million. So I'll be bringing back that, both the Jobs Development Authority to officially make that a contribution if, as part of the grant application. And then also with that city property, too, have the city council say that can be part of our, our donation to this project, if, you know, we're accepted and it moves forward. But we need all that in front of the, the application. It is due on December 1st, and on the school district, we propose, it's gonna be heard a couple times at the Grand Forks School Board, and with, with final approval sometime in the latter half of November. So that's moving through, and I wanted to give you heads up, and that'll end up on that. The other thing I've been asked by a few folks is the legislative session, they're gonna go back in on the week of November 8th. And as Mayor Wachowski talked previous, you know, there's some funding requests that we have as part of the ARPA, and the state has additional cash, so hopefully we see lots of benefits on infrastructure, one-time funding with the legislation. But they also, they're gonna finalize the redistricting. And what I've been told by Senator Holmberg is they've approved a draft of ours, but they still need, that our draft of our district lines need to be final approved during that special session, so we expect that to happen. However, in advance of that, administratively, I've, I've called on Adam Jonison in our IT Department, which includes our GIS Department, to start looking at where those populations have shifted, and start drawing some word maps for us, for you to look at. So our plan is to get those resolved by the end of the year. And so Mr. Jonison's gonna be working with, within his own department, from a mapping perspective and from a population, but also working with Maureen Storseth in finance, because with voting in precincts, she'll have to be involved in her department. And then Ryan Brooks is planning, too, in the planning department. But they'll, we'll bring a team approach back. And I've also asked Mr. Jonison, let's bring back more than one option, so you can see at least a couple different options that you can look at. We talked to Council President Sandy earlier today, is that our plan would be go, to go through the community whole and then to city council, and use our, our normal way that we, we do business here, that you'd have some working sessions in advance of any approval that you would be able to look at, and ask questions of Adam, and have him go, be able to discuss with you first. So just so you know, we, we plan to bring that back after the November 8th special session, let's let, let them final approve. But then the first community whole meeting thereafter, we would plan to bring back some draft, get your feedback, and then look to finalize those before the end of the year. With that, Mayor, that's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Fionn. Moving on to nine, mayor and city council, or mayor and council member comments. Mr. Weigle, any comments tonight?
Just briefly, Mayor, just thank you to Chief Nelson and his staff and officers for everything they've done, and Chief, your leadership on navigating a really difficult time for our community. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle. Did they get that spare tire replaced that blew out in Ohio? Did you get to hear about that one?
I bet they're, I bet our roads are better here, so that's why they're having that issue.
Sounds good. Any comments tonight, Ms. Dockler?
Two quick things. I want to thank everyone who was able to attend Indigenous Peoples' Day last Monday. We had a standing room only attendance, it was great, kids and families. And it was just really nice to be able to have that space for folks that are here in our community. And also congratulations to Vice President Councilwoman Mac and her family on the birthday of her daughter.
Thank you, Ms. Dockler. Mr. Weber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cavani?
Just wanted to echo everything for the, our appreciation for the police department and everything you guys have done. Appreciate it.
Mr. Veen?
One quick question, and it'd be for you, Mayor. You were able to, I think it was rightfully so, go down to testify on some of the ARPA fundings. Do you have any additional feedback? Did you get any sense of what's gonna happen with those requests that we were, you were looking at with 42nd Street primary, I guess?
Yeah, no indications yet. I think the ask is probably a bit of a moot point on 42nd. I think it's gonna be a tough one for the interpass, it's probably gonna have to go through DOT, but there was other street projects, we felt important to put that one forward. With Red River Valley, I'm really hoping, I think the originally, in working with Mayor Mahoney down there, was looking for 200 million. It's kind of been identified that maybe 50 million would be a better ask, so it is shovel-ready and ahead of 2023, so I'm hoping something will happen that can, can move that project forward a little quicker. You know, we're all concerned with inflation and other cities dropping off of that, that project and making it more expensive, and then quite frankly, more risky for, for those smaller towns. So that's my thoughts, I'll be there. My, my family's hasn't got quite to see me yet after getting back from DC, so hopefully I'll get home in time to at least see them before I take off in the morning. Anything else, Mr. Veen?
Nope, thank you.
All right, President Sandy?
A lot of thanks and appreciation to go around. Certainly, Mayor, thanks for attending out in Washington for our community. Of course, our local PD under difficult times, Brandon, Becca, all the EDC staff for all the work that they've done, certainly Mr. Schoen, our water department on their, their award, Lynn. We should always thank our public health officials for everything that they're doing for us these days. I have one quick comment. As someone that takes a lot of feedback from the local community related to public issues, I'm constantly hearing about people turning left on 7th Avenue South at Starbucks. We have got to do something about it because it's a safety issue. I know people legally can turn left there. You sit in the driving lane, Danny says no, engineering says yes. I don't know who's actually right. But what I'm being told is, what I'm getting mixed opinions from people on it. Mr. Grasser, we don't need anything today, but we've got to do something. Let's put in a no-left turn sign. I don't care what we do, we've gotta do something.
Mr. Grasser, I'm gonna stop you there, we're gonna do comments, you can follow up after. Thank you, even though you appeared pretty miraculously there.
Thank you, Mayor.
But thank you, President Sandy, I think you're absolutely right on that, that intersection. Finally, for my comments, I just wanted to hit on, you know, it's a tough situation for, for myself and council to be in, when you, when you feel someone that has been treated unfairly, but we, I think we've done a lot to try to help the situation, and keep in mind, anything that we did there was basically gonna be divvied up from all the rest of the, the city taxpayers. So it's really a balance, and we are constantly working to try to find a balance on how to cost share things properly, and it's, it's an ongoing, it's not a, not something that ever stops or, or begins or ends, it's something that's continuous. So I appreciate city staff's work on that, and it is tough situations at times, but we're, we're getting through a lot of them, and we're finding, you know, finding at least a decision that makes both sides upset, so it kind of works out good in that, that case, I guess. With that, I've got nothing else. Oh, Mr. Weber, it's not your turn, but we'll, go ahead. You, oh, you want to adjourn, all right. My comments are done, we'll go on to 10 adjournments. We got a motion from Mr. Weber and a second from Mr. Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.